Welcome to the Beverly Hills Unified School District Board of Education Regular Schedule Meeting for this wonderful May 9, 2023. Councilmember Nazarian alerted me to the following. at dozens of schools in at least 28 of Iran's 31 provinces. Hundreds of girls were hospitalized with severe symptoms. This horrendous attack on these girls is deplorable. We stand in solidarity with these schoolgirls, and I would like to ask us all to take a moment of silence to show our support and bring awareness to this issue. Thank you all very much. We're going to call the meeting to order, and I would like to invite up to lead us in the flag salute and reading the mission, vision, and community pledge. Our middle schoolers, Simon Johnson and Iana Ahn.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our students will realize their full potential to thrive with integrity in a complex, changing
The BHUSD community acknowledges that in order to achieve educational excellence, we must act with integrity and respect for each other and our learning environment. Therefore, I pledge to model civil behavior and respect in all communications and in public while maintaining a culture of honesty. Listen and acknowledge differences of opinion. Do my part to protect an inclusive culture in which we honor the relationship between all school community members and honor our learning environment, including how we take care of our schools and personal property. By holding ourselves and each other accountable to this pledge at all times, we will promote
Thank you very much, both. We will see you in a few moments. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Marcus and Mrs. Wells. All in favor? Motion carries. Dr. Bregge, a report of closed session action.
President Marco, there was no action in closed session tonight.
Thank you very much, sir. And now we have some commendations and recognitions, which I am going to do. I will read the resolutions, and then we can vote on them. It will be hard pressed not to vote on them once I read them. So in celebration of Teacher Appreciation Week, although we should appreciate teachers We should appreciate all of us. More appreciation, less of whatever is not appreciation. Whereas the teacher educators of the, oh, I'm sorry, Elena, can you please join me? Whereas the teacher educators of the Beverly Hills Unified School District work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and the utmost professionalism. And whereas our teachers shape and influence young lives for a lifetime through their guidance and instruction as well as by example. And whereas the future success of our children depends on the dedicated and conscientious instruction provided by teachers and other educators. And whereas the teaching profession collectively remains one of our noblest and most vital And whereas the love of learning and the desire for excellence that our teachers impart to their students is the key to a bright and successful future. And whereas our essential certificated staff demonstrate commitment, perseverance, and flexibility on a daily basis. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Beverly Hills Unified School District Board of Education wishes to honor and thank teachers for their diligent and dedicated efforts to ensure all children have a quality education. Be it further resolved that the Beverly Hills Unified School District Board of Education encourages all communities to join together to honor teachers by proclaiming Teacher Appreciation Week in the Beverly Hills Unified School District this year to be from May 7 through May 13, 2023, in honor of the district's exceptional teaching staff whose excellence, talent, and expertise have enabled this district to maintain a program of quality Colleagues, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-2023-22, Teacher Appreciation Week.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus and Dr. Stern. All in favor? And for that, you get a wonderful certificate here. That one's not yours. Give me the right one. And that one's not yours. They're out of order. There you go.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, you are now graduated. And if that weren't enough, let's appreciate some classified staff while we're at it. Carol and Adelfa, can you join me up here, please? And Pierre, did Pierre come in? No, okay. Representing is also Pierre, but he is not with us at the moment. Hi, come on, come here. Councilmember Nazarian alerted me to the following. Between November of 2022 and March of 2023, close to 7,000 schoolgirls in Iran were poisoned at dozens of schools in at least 28 of Iran's 31 provinces. Hundreds of girls were hospitalized with severe symptoms. This horrendous attack on these girls is deplorable. We stand in solidarity with these schoolgirls, and I would like to ask us all to take a moment of silence to show our support and bring awareness to this issue. Thank you. We're going to call the meeting to order, and I would like to invite up to lead us in the flag salute and reading the mission, vision, and community pledge our middle schoolers, Simon Johnson and Iana Ahm.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our students will realize their full potential to thrive with integrity in a complex, changing
The BHUSD community acknowledges that in order to achieve educational excellence, we must act with integrity and respect for each other in our learning environment. Therefore, I pledge to model civil behavior and respect in all communications and in public while maintaining a culture of honesty. Listen and acknowledge differences of opinion. Do my part to protect an inclusive culture in which we honor the relationship between all school community members and honor our learning environment, including how we take care of our schools and personal property. By holding ourselves and each other accountable to this pledge at all times, we will promote an environment of educational excellence that will allow our entire BHUSD community to thrive.
Thank you very much, both. We will see you in a few moments. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Marcus and Mrs. Wells. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Bregge, a report of closed session action.
President Margot, there was no action in closed session tonight.
Thank you very much, sir. And now we have some commendations and recognitions, which I am going to do. I will read the resolutions, and then we can vote on them. You'll be hard-pressed not to vote on them once I read them. So in celebration of Teacher Appreciation Week, although we should appreciate teachers year-round, right?
We are here.
Appreciate it. We should appreciate all of us. More appreciation, less of whatever is not appreciation. Okay. Whereas the teacher educators of the-- oh, I'm sorry. Elena, can you please join me? Whereas the teacher educators of the Beverly Hills Unified School District work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and the utmost professionalism, and whereas our teachers shape and influence young lives for a lifetime through their guidance and instruction as well as by example, and whereas the future success of our children depends on the dedicated and conscientious instruction provided by teachers and other educators, and whereas the teaching profession collectively remains one of our noblest and most vital professions, and whereas the love of learning and the desire for excellence that our teachers impart to their students is the key to a bright and successful future, and whereas our essential certificated staff demonstrate commitment, perseverance, and flexibility on a daily basis. Now therefore be it resolved that the Beverly Hills Unified School District Board of Education wishes to honor and thank teachers for their diligent and dedicated efforts to ensure all children have a quality education. Be it further resolved that the Beverly Hills Unified School District Board of Education encourages all communities to join together to honor teachers by proclaiming Teacher Appreciation Week in the Beverly Hills Unified School District this year to be from May 7 through May 13, 2023, in honor of the district's exceptional teaching staff, whose excellence, talent, and expertise have enabled this district to maintain a program of quality education. Colleagues, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-2023-22, Teacher Appreciation Week.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus and Dr. Stern. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And for that, you get a wonderful certificate. Here. Nope, that one's not yours. Give me the right one. And that one's not yours. They're out of order. Sorry. That's yours. There you go.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. You are now graduated. And if that weren't enough, let's appreciate some classified staff while we're at it. Carol and Adelphah, can you join me up here, please? And Pierre, did Pierre come in? No. Okay. Representing is also Pierre, but he is not with us at the moment. Hi, come up. Come here. So this is Resolution 2022-23, Classified School Employee Week. And whereas the classified staff of the Beverly Hills Unified School District contributes significantly to the outstanding educational programs available in our district and are the heartbeat of our schools, and whereas the classified school employees are crucial partners with teachers, parents, and administrators in the Beverly Hills Unified School District, whereas the classified staff is involved in nearly every aspect of education, including maintaining school buildings and grounds, providing secretarial and clerical assistance, preparing and serving meals, assisting in the classroom, and many other specialized services, and whereas these dedicated individuals deserve recognition and thanks for the outstanding work they're doing, and whereas our essential classified staff demonstrate commitment, perseverance, and flexibility on a daily basis, now therefore be it resolved that the Beverly Hills Unified School District Board of Education does hereby proclaim Classified School Employee Week in the Beverly Hills Unified School District from May 21 through May 27, and does hereby pay tribute to the diligence, loyalty, skill, and expertise of all classified employees. May I get a motion, please?
I move for approval of Resolution 2022-2023-23, Classified School Employee Appreciation Week, May 21 through the 27, 2023.
I'll second. Second the motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Wells and Mrs. Marcus, Dr. Stern, for deferring. Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Of course not. Motion carries. Thank you very much. And I guess we're doing this a little early so we don't miss the beginning, which will start commence before our next board meeting, so you should be celebrated on time. And I will give you guys one of these each and say thank you very much for everything that you do to support our students. And then Ms. Kraus, I will give you the-- for Mr. Holly. Thank you very much, everyone.
Yay. Yay, staff.
So I don't know if there's any comments from the board before I give a quick transition.
I'd just like to say thank you, and we appreciate you so much, both our teachers and our classified employees. We just have a deep debt of gratitude to you for all of your passion and care that you give our children, so thank you very much.
Definitely ditto those comments. We were trying to have a 7:00 PM maybe hard stop tonight, so if you noticed that we are keeping it short, that's the only reason why, but couldn't agree more. Thank you.
I will echo those words, and as a teacher who depended on the classified staff to help me and all the teachers who supported me, I can only say thank you. I know what a difficult job you had. So congratulations and all the best to you.
I'm really happy that we have this officially as a resolution. It's well-deserved, and of course, every day should be appreciation for you guys. Thank you.
Haven't I said enough already?
And well said. And I will also add my thanks in my superintendent's report, so we're going to move on to our student spotlight, and I'd like to reintroduce you to Dr. Skan.
Okay, so I have two amazing students that I want to introduce tonight. Oh, okay, all right, I'm short, so sorry. Is that better? Better? Okay. All right, so I have a little bio. I got to call them into the office today just to like make sure that the bio was good and if they had anything they wanted to add, and I think they both thought they were in trouble. They were so nervous walking into my office. They were not in trouble, so I want to have both of them come up so they can be here while I'm reading about them. So Simon and Iana, if you could come on up. Yay. Okay, so both of these students, besides just being amazing BVMS students, on their the outside of the classroom and outside of school, they participate in lots of extracurriculars. Simon is on our BVMS cross-country team, and similar to the high school where they have the all CIF students that get recognized, FIA, which is our league for middle school, is recognizing students with an all FIA award, and Simon is getting named the all FIA student for cross-country, which is amazing. So the cross-country award is for Division One athlete who finishes in the top 20% in a meet for at least four meets, and I believe Simon did it for every meet, which is spectacular, which is clearly why he's getting this award. And then I asked him a little bit about, you know, why he was into cross-country, and he said he started it last year, and he went from a mile time of 8:30 to then 6:20, which is incredible. And then he's like, well, I figured if I improved that much in one year, I might as well just do it again to see how much more I could improve, which is such a BVMS student. I love it. And then he went from a 13:22 mile this year to a 12:01 two-mile, which is about a six-minute mile. So that's huge. So congratulations on this award. He's going to be recognized by FIA at a ceremony on June 10, so we're looking forward to that little recognition as well, but we wanted to present this to you as well, so a little certificate for you. And then Iana is another amazing. She's an eighth-grade student, so we're losing her to the high school, but you know, it's okay. Like, we'll probably have some tears at promotion. And so this is something that we wanted to recognize her for, that I actually found out from her band orchestra teacher, and it's not actually even a school-related extracurricular that she does, but it is so spectacular and amazing that I wanted you guys to know the type of student we have at our school. So Iana is an eighth grader, and she traveled two weeks ago to the Dominican Republic to represent the United States in the Pan Am International Taekwondo Championship. And not only did she go there to represent, she actually won the championships, which is amazing. She had to win quite a few matches to accomplish that goal, and she is going to now travel to Europe this summer to represent the U.S. in Taekwondo. So congratulations. We're so, so proud of you for accomplishing such a huge thing. Not anyone can say they've done that, so kudos to you. Yay. Congratulations. Stay focused. I don't want to say something.
Colleagues, any brief getting, Mandy, out of here at seven comments?
Congratulations to both of you on your accomplishments, and we look forward to seeing your continued success, especially in the high school as well. Thank you.
Just a huge congratulations. Well done, guys. Thank you for joining us tonight.
I can see that the cross-country coach is just chomping at the bits, ready to get this young man next year, and I'm sure we're going to see more of you. And congratulations on your amazing award and your musical background. It's a wonder we love having students like you, both of you. You bring us very proud.
I realize that both of those activities, cross-country and Taekwondo, require a tremendous amount of discipline, and I think one of the best lessons people can learn at any age is that if you can persevere when your body's saying, stop, 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 and you can keep going, it's an amazing gift, and it will serve you for the rest of your life, so congratulations.
Is that what my body keeps saying every day? Thank you both for representing our district in such a fine manner. It looks like we have basically half of the Justice League in our room right now. So all the best. See you soon.
Just a quick thank you as well from myself. Thank you for representing BVMS with pride and excellence.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Love it. Love it. Love it. And then you're--
Okay. All right. So for our teacher spotlight, I'm going to, in a minute, invite one of my teachers up. I don't know, how do we get the presentation on? Oh, okay. How do we get it for-- oh, and I have handouts for the board. So sorry. I thought it was organized. Take one, pass it down. Much appreciated. Oh, perfect. Okay. So I know one of the goals for the strategic plan for BVMS was our CERs, our claim evidence reading, writing across the curriculum, and I know you guys have heard about it throughout our strategic plan updates throughout the year, and we were actually already planning to have this spotlight because I wanted you to get a little bit more information, and then in our study session last week, you guys had some more questions. And one of the questions that you guys asked about was some of the research behind, like the reasoning why we chose to do CERs. So if we could go to the next slide. Okay, so in terms of the claim evidence reasoning writing structure, there's a lot of data that supports the growth that we'll see in students. So one study showed that across 100 schools, they achieved two times the reading growth per year on the NWA MAP assessment, which is huge. 20% gain in writing scores in as little as eight weeks for students. And then students achieving grade level proficiency on the PARC, which is equivalent to the SBAQ, which is what we take, it's just another consortium of testing, increased by 13 percentage points. So when we're looking at our goals for BVMS to increase our test scores, the research that supports the CER helps us to hopefully accomplish the goals of increasing our test scores. If we go to the next slide. We also have spent a lot of time as district leadership talking about one year's growth in one year's time or more growth in one year's time, and for students that are lower-achieving students, they can sometimes achieve three to four times more growth by working on this type of writing structure. So when we're targeting our struggling students, this detailed structured system helps them to focus their thinking and their writing. And then just the collaboration across the curriculum, it helps students to make connections between classrooms, so it's not just in a box, like in my English class or in my science class, and they're able to see those patterns and the reasonings across everywhere, which really then helps to increase their scores on things like the ACTs, the SATs, and our CASP scores. So that's the like research behind why we wanted to do the CERs. I've also had experience in two previous districts where we had significant growth on our test scores. And then just kind of community building as a campus, it unifies the students to a common language academically and the teachers, too. We're all focused on the same thing across our classrooms, and they're having conversations on the field about it and at lunch, and it was pretty spectacular this year to see. We've got some videos later on for you to see some students talking about it. But I do want to invite up now Ms. Silva, Abra Silva, who is one of our amazing teachers. She is one of my MTSS TOSAs this year, who's been helping to focus on improving instruction for us. She's been with the district for 22 years, and she is one of my rock star teachers. So she's going to walk us through. She's led us in her role as an MTSS TOSA. She's been facilitating the CER process throughout campus. So it's really been kind of teacher, like I threw out the idea, but then the teachers took it and ran with it. So I'm going to pass it off to you.
Thank you. You got it. Next slide, please. Oh, a microphone. Sorry, I don't have this in my classroom. This is very exciting. So first, thank you, Dr. Skan, for the opportunity to be an MTSS TOSA. I've really enjoyed the process of writing the CERs with our teachers, and I'm so proud of our staff and our students. It's been an incredible journey, an incredible year. So this slide kind of tells the story. So CER writing is a skill, a skill that can be used in any content area, and we're using that as a vehicle to bring our students to becoming stronger thinkers and writers. And like Dr. Skan mentioned, we're all using the same language. We have definitions for what claim, evidence, and reasoning represent, and we're all using that same language. Our students are taking the same performance tasks in their classes, so every sixth-grade math student's taking the same performance task. That continuity, that practice, they're doing it in English class, they're doing it in science class, they're doing it in their math class or history classes. So we're writing across all content areas. We're even practicing CERs in their PE classes and their foreign language classes. The teachers are grading the CERs using a common success criteria, a rubric. We're all using, speaking the same language, we're all writing the same performance task, and we're all scoring it using the same success criteria. That consistency, that continuity, is allowing our students to grow as critical thinkers and writers. It's very exciting. It's very exciting. Next slide. So let's look at the CER writing process in some simple terms. C is a claim. So teachers instruct by asking a question. Kids then answer the question by offering their opinion, but we don't just want them to give an opinion, we want them to back up their opinion with evidence. Teachers provide evidence, it could be a newspaper article, any primary source material, it could be a piece of art, it could be an image or a video. Students use those sources to find evidence to prove their claim, to prove the answer to the question. And the hardest part has been their reasoning, where students use their own critical thinking to show exactly how the evidence they have cited proves the claim, answers the question. So I thought we would look at someone we all know and probably love as an example. Next slide, please. Tom Hanks. I think everyone in this room has probably seen a movie by Tom Hanks, or even some of us who are older bosom buddies going back to the 1980s. Tom Hanks is a beloved, successful actor. So if a teacher asks a question, is Tom Hanks successful, we'd all probably say, yes, of course, he's a successful actor. But we can't just answer a question, we must provide proof. We need evidence. Next slide. So I would have students go to a source, like the Internet Movie Database, IMDB.com, to find proof that Tom Hanks is actually successful. For example, he's had 211 nominations for acting, 92 wins, two Oscars. He's had a 42-year acting career with 93 acting credits. He has done a lot, but that's just the evidence. Students will have to then reason, how does having that many nominations, being an Oscar Award winner, make you a successful actor? So they might reason by saying, well, if you have all those acting credits, it shows that you are a proven earner for the movie industry. They're going to invest in you, therefore they're going to pay you more because you make them money. Having all those nominations means he has respect of all of his peers. Again, it gives him street cred. It gives him choices of the films he makes. Again, success. And of course, 42 years in the Hollywood entertainment industry creates both personal and financial success. That kind of reasoning would be used to show how Tom Hanks is a successful actor. That's a CER in a really fast way, using Tom Hanks who most of us probably love. So hopefully I'm making sense so far. So next slide, please. Where did this whole thing start? Well, Dr. Skan came to us with an idea. She saw a need of an area of growth for our students, and that was the area of critical thinking and writing. So she led the creation of a school-wide CER initiative. And this is the first time we've-- I've been in this district for a very long time, and having a whole school focusing on one goal, and that being writing, as a former English teacher, it warms my heart. So we introduced the model in spring of 2022, and we outlined our plan for 2022-2023. Next slide. In the summer, thank you to Dustin, teachers were paid to actually give up their time to create performance tasks in the area of math, science, English, history, and foreign language, and we all created a common success criteria, that scoring guide that I had mentioned. Then in the fall of 2022, we wanted to have a baseline for all of our students, so we created a really fun murder mystery baseline, CER, that every single bulldog wrote on the same day. And those conversations Dr. Skan mentioned, it was awesome hearing everyone talk about, was it a murder or was it an accident based on this awesome CER they were doing? Next slide. Throughout this past school year, we've been trained by someone named Liz Mira, who was a phenomenal trainer. All math, all science, history, English, teachers have been trained on the CER writing model. We've also been given days to calibrate our grading, which is the hardest part of creating a CER. Once you have that instructional piece down, getting together in a room with your colleagues, and having all sixth-grade teachers look at the CER and discuss, why is that a six out of 10 or a seven out of 10? And that allowed us to really go in-depth with not only our instructional practices, but the actual scoring guide itself, to figure out what are the needs of our students? What are our gross growths, sorry, not gross growths, that we need to create, and how can we best help and support them? And then we had follow-up training days, and then with those training days, we updated all of our performance tasks, we improved them, we made them better, we modified the success criteria, and we keep growing and changing as the data indicates so our kids can be successful. Next slide. Am I talking too fast? I'm trying to maintain your seven o'clock out. Okay. Excellent. Very good. Very good. So where are we right now? Every single sixth or eighth grader has written a performance task. You see our performance task in all of their core classes. We're all grading with a common success criteria, all the scores have been collected. All the scores have been collected. All the data has been analyzed. We're using that data to help drive our instructional practice for this coming school year. Next slide. The CER writing model has reached beyond BVMS. With opportunities of professional development that we had this past year, high school and elementary teachers were able to attend a session that I led on the CER writing program, and the materials have been shared. So now this wonderful thing we're doing at BV is going up and going down to our high school elementary teachers, which is fantastic. And the most important thing is our students are more confident. They are, they went into the CASP test saying, oh, I know what to do. I'm simply writing a CER that I've already done in math, history, science, and English. I got this. And that has been wonderful to see. Next slide. So now we're going to hear from a few of our teachers at BVMS about how on their perspective on the CER writing model.
Hi, I'm Kristin Berchem, seventh grade teacher and chair of the English department at Beverly Vista. Our CER initiative has helped to address what English teachers have long advocated. Students need to be reading and writing inside and outside of their English classes. Writing is a foundational skill, but it's complex. When students receive guided instruction and practice in all subject areas, it helps them to communicate more clearly and to increase their critical thinking skills. The students just took the CASP this week, and they will tell you that large portions of the ELA test are not based on literature, but on science and social studies. CER helped them to prepare for this and helped them to increase their confidence as writers. I'm really proud of what we've accomplished this year, and I'm excited for next year when my new group of students comes in with experience in CERs. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Mr. Hurley with BVMS. I just wanted to comment on our school-wide initiative to streamline the CER writing process. And just across the board, I mean, I've seen improvement in scores between first semester and second semester. And I also hear little comments like, I remember doing this in Mr. Lopez's class. I remember doing this in science. I remember doing this in math. So I feel as though having a systematic streamlined way of writing really clarifies what would be a difficult task for especially middle school students.
Hi, my name is Mrs. Carver, and I teach sixth grade history here at Beverly Vista Middle School. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the school-wide CER initiative. Some of the things that I have noticed the kids doing this year is I've seen higher quality writing, especially from the beginning of the year. I've also seen them make cross-curricular connections. So I hear kids say things like, oh, we did that in English class, or, oh, that's a claim, or this is reasoning. I've seen them be able to connect that from history to science to English. And I've also seen them use, have language recognition, excuse me, have language recognition. They know what a claim is. They know what evidence is. They know, to an extent, what reasoning is, and they know to use those words. So their language recognition around CER has really been developed, which I think is really great. I think that this school-wide CER initiative has been really beneficial to them, and I look forward to implementing it even for the next year.
And now the most important people at Beverly Vista are our students. So here's some of our student perspectives.
Hello, my name is Olivia Rickner, and I'm in seventh grade. CERs have helped to improve my writing skills so much, it has become like second nature. Instead of going in blindly with your essay, CERs are a blueprint for your thinking. They provide a structure that help you project your ideas into writing. When writing an essay, it is always important to follow your line of thinking and finish your thoughts instead of talking in fragments. CERs prevent choppiness by connecting your reasoning back to your claim. I also felt more confident when going into the CASP because I could utilize it in both math and English performance tasks.
Hi, I'm Tyler Mroni, and I'm in seventh grade. And I feel that CERs helped me in all my classes because they helped me understand how to support my evidence with strong reasoning. And it also helped me a lot on my CASP test because when I was doing the informative part of the CASP test, I can find the evidence quickly and support it with strong reasoning.
Hi, my name is Chloe Cavet, and I am a sixth grade student at BVMS, as well as a student of Ms. Silva's. My journey with CERs has been an outstanding experience and have taught me different ways to apply arguments, narratives, descriptive, and reflective writing. Not only have CERs helped me improve as a student individual, but have taught me how to strongly cite sources and evidence and help me find the best evidence and explain it the best ways. I have become a stronger writer and is now my go-to way to write in all of my classes. Overall, CERs have helped me express my own critical thinking and will definitely help me be the best writer I can be.
Hi, my name is Noah Nazir. I'm a sixth grader at Beverly Vista. Writing CERs have helped me get better at citing evidence and elaborating on my evidence, which proves my clip. Writing CERs in all of my classes have helped me become a better writer and critical thinker.
Next slide. I know, aren't they precious? My goodness, I could not love them more. So the big takeaways from our students are that they have a blueprint for writing, a go-to way to write in all of their classes, a consistent structure. They're practicing across all the content areas, and they're more confident. And they are, they have a plan for their C, their CASP test. They would, and they're practiced and at their ready for the CER performance task. I mean, it's just absolutely wonderful to see what we're doing at BV. I'm very proud of all of our bulldogs. Lastly, we're going to show you, I'm not going to read it to you, but I'm just going to show you, next slide, please, an example of a CER by Luca Strajga, who is one of our sixth grade honor students at BV. Next slide. So the essential question was, should Sargon be considered great? And we have all of our students actually write by hand, the CERs. And I just typed it up for your benefit so you actually can read it. Their claims are in pink, so he has answers to the question. He supports it in green with the evidence, and we all use the same high letters across the school. And then he has his reasoning that shows why Sargon should be considered great. Those of you who have the packets, I highly recommend you reading it because it's incredible. This sixth grader wrote this amazing 10 out of 10 CER. Last slide, please. Our next slide. One more. So where are we going? This summer, hopefully, we're going to have a workshop to continue our good work on our CERs. We're going to have our students write next year in their math, history, science, and English courses. CERs, performance task again. We're going to have more training from Liz Mira, and we're going to focus on our struggling learners. Next slide. We're also going to have our teachers continue to receive individualized support from me, the MTSS TOSA. Wow, it's really hard to talk online like this. I'm sorry. I'm very nervous. And we're going to continue collecting all of our data. Adults are very different than children, just so you all know. It's much more nerve-wracking. We're going to continue collecting our data this year, and we're going to look at the CASP, hopefully looking for growth on our CER performance tasks for math and for ELA. And again, looking for the increased writing and critical thinking skills. Now, are there any questions for Dr. Sgon or myself?
Alex, we'll start.
I just have a comment. I just wanted to say how much I admire the unity and cohesion across all the departments and teachers at BVMS, and I think that's really amazing. So just thank you for bringing this to us.
Thank you. It really makes a difference.
I agree. It's very exciting, and I want to thank you for being flexible and wanting to really adopt the CER initiative in the way that you have and to really spread that amongst your colleagues in terms of the training and implementation and how to evaluate it and that you're continuing to iterate this as you get data back from the kids and how they're performing. And I'm really excited to see this spread, and I'm really excited to see the change in the approach for teaching. So it's wonderful, and I'm certain we're going to see great results. So thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Sgon, thank you so much for bringing this initiative to our school district and also to your team for taking it on, you know, with such enthusiasm. I'm sure that that makes a big difference to the kids to know that all the adults are on the same page about this. I would say this is probably like a graduate-level approach because I went to law school, and that's where I learned IRAC, issue, rule, application, conclusion. And so depending on if you think I can, I'm an effective speaker or not, I'll let you be the judge of it. But I think that it's something that's going to serve our students for the rest of their lives, not just on, in today's classroom, today's CASP, but really for their adult, adult lives. So thank you for equipping them.
Well, it was a very impressive. I am blown away by what never existed when I was teaching, as you can imagine. I, I didn't even know what CER was until the beginning of the year, obviously, and I learned about it. The only time I really heard about it was when my granddaughter came home and they were arguing about CER and this murder incident, whatever. The two grandchildren were fighting over it. But I, I, that was the only time that I actually ever heard about it during the year. So I am wondering, April, is there, have the parents been following this? Is there any feedback from kids with, to the parents and back and how they're doing? Have you had anything along that line? Or is this, I just wondered about that.
So I can chime in real quickly. In terms of like feedback, I mean, I hear it on the yard in terms of like the kids like talking about it. In our, every time that we've done a performance task, I will, in my weekly newsletter, send to parents like, oh, they did their math performance task this week in sixth grade. Ask them, and I'll give them a question prompt that they can talk to their kids about. So they followed along in that sense that they know when the performance tasks are happening and what they could talk to their kids about with the CERs.
Have you had any comments from parents themselves? Or have you had any comments from parents?
No, which I would count as a good thing. No complaints.
I'm not looking at complaints. I'm looking at people who say, that's great. And that's what I was hoping that I would get, that kind of, because maybe, I don't know.
I hear it from the kids. So like especially after, so we had CASP testing last week. I heard it from them, like hands down, they were like, oh, I did so good on the performance task. Like I just did a CER, and this was my claim. And they like were full-on able to like explain everything that they did for the CASP.
And the kids get their results back, right? They do get results back?
Yes. So like we had the math-
So they can grow from that?
Yes. The math performance task was graded like the week before CASP testing, and the teachers like right away went back to their classrooms and gave them feedback just in time for the test. So they get it like, right, like we did it, test, grading day within a week, and then the follow-up training day within a week of that.
Okay, well, there were just two more things that I wanted to make, and I was so impressed by the students that spoke. I mean, they were to be unbelievable. They, such confidence and such great speaking skills for the, the young people that spoke. I also made another comment. I was thinking about the pathway that we have in the school, and I immediately said, fifth grade, fifth grade, fifth grade. And I know that you're probably going to start to do something along that line eventually, or maybe they already are. I, I don't know, but I wondered about that. And then the last thing, I would love to see some of those prompts you're going to develop this summer for those kids because I think they're going to be great. So again, thank you. This is an amazing program. I'm really impressed by it.
Thank you.
Thumbs up.
So a couple of weeks ago, I spoke with one of my favorite educators and administrators, Phil Chang, great writer, great teacher. And I was talking to him about something, and it's kind of a dirty word these days, but it's, it has come up, and that is ChatGPT. So I think this is amazing, and I think that, I think that this is a very healthy, robust system against that. But I would love to know your perspective on if you feel like that it trumps the, what ChatGPT can do. In case any of you are wondering what that is, there is now AI apps that can take a prompt and provide an algorithm of, you know, reason and all these things. But Mr. Chang was saying, and I do agree, I, I hope this is true, that generally you can tell the voice and the tone of a given writer. So if a child should choose to take that unfortunate route, you still, as a teacher, would be able to say, you know, I, I know, I know the tone, and I, this is not, you know, your writing. But I would just love to know your thoughts on this issue.
We have to adapt to the times, and this is now a part of our life. I use ChatGPT to create actually CER responses that I have my students read and score themselves. We have to learn to adapt, and I know we have our teachers at school providing programs through Khan Academy to help teachers use how to use this, how to utilize this in their instructional practices. As far as how we protect our kids from using that, all of our CERs are done by hand. So yes, a student could go home and ask AI to write this for them. They could then memorize it, come into class, and try to then purge on the paper and get it out. I don't really have an issue with kids using it on their own to practice for models because I think it's, potentially could be useful to them. This is still unknown territory that we're going to all navigate this upcoming school year, but most of the kids are using ChatGPT outside the classroom, but all their CER performance tasks are all done by hand. So unless it's memorized, they're, it's just their thinking. And you can tell their voice. Like I can tell when a, a college-ready student writes something versus my 11-year-olds.
Yeah, right.
There's a big difference. Yeah. I'm like, do you know what this word means, darling? And they're like, no. I'm like, okay.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I mean, it does have its use, and it is, it does seem to be a good, not a bad thing. It's just one does not want to be deceptive with what they're able to write. But I think, I think it's an amazing tool.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you for the presentation. There was a wonderful teacher who's now retired in our district who used to say to her children that practice doesn't make perfect, practice makes better. And I think that applies to this, which, by the way, I love, the world of acronyms is very good at branding, branding things that we've been doing for decades.
Correct.
There's three paragraph essays, five paragraph essays, which all work on the same philosophy of, of your reasoning and state your question and all that. So, so like Ecclesiastes said, there's nothing new under the sun. It's just we've reformulated in a way to be a better tool. And what I appreciate, appreciate about this the most is the cross-curricular applications, which I've been rooting for, project-based learning and pushing us in that direction. And this is a step into that direction. So if, if all the kids get out of this as just improving their writing, for, that's still a major win because that carries in every subject. So thank you very much. Dr. Bergy?
Yes, thank you, Silva, Dr. Sgon, for your presentation. I think as, as a former math teacher in the classroom, I, I was always struggling when kids were always trying to race through things just so quickly. And writing was no exception. It was, you know, even in today's world with technology, we're always looking for, you know, a faster way. And so people don't really give as much work or the evidence piece. So that's what I really like about this. It's really getting people to slow down a little bit, but to also be supported by some structure. And like Mrs. Manichari said about with graduate work, you kind of learn it afterwards about like what that scaffolding looks like. But to do this early on, this is the kind of terminology that we're going to see our kids take into high school and then into college as well. So very impressive presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. So in our continuing celebration of education and appreciation, what an educationally appreciative agenda we have tonight, and quick, too. Dr. Stern, we're going to move into Now, No One Knows. I was with Marissa Long, BVMS. And you guys can start that, and I'll shut up when I see it pop up there. But until then, I'm, keep it going, keep it going, keep it going.
Hi, welcome to Now, No One Knows. I am here today at Beverly Vista Middle School with history teacher, Marissa Long.
Hello.
Hello, Marissa. How long have you been teaching in Beverly Hills Unified?
Ah, this is my 10th year in the district.
Can you tell us something about yourself that nobody really knows?
I'm kind of obsessed with podcasts. My favorite podcast is The Moth. I love going to Moth Tape and Tale of Storytelling. During the pandemic, one of our colleagues here sent, sent us all like an opportunity to submit a lesson to this digital billboard company called Seven Word Lessons. And mine was selected. And then my seven-word lesson appeared all over the country on digital billboards. Okay, so part of the California Social Studies framework is bringing in discussion into the classroom. We do in eighth grade, social studies, something called Socratic seminars. When we have conversations in history class that are things that can be debatable, can be borderline controversial, can have multiple different frames of reference or thinking, we have to listen to understand, not just listen to respond. And the way we listen to understand is by knowing the people that we're having these conversations with. So at the beginning of the year, we do this activity called Perspectival Spectacles, like I said, where everyone gets like a cutout of what looked like 3D glasses. So these are yours, Noah.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. At the end of our production of our Perspectival Spectacles, they will have the 10 different elements of sociologists say, bring upon us our own perspective. And those include 10 questions like this. Where were you born? Where were your parents born? What languages do you speak? Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. After we do our Perspectival Spectacles, we will transition to our First Socratic Seminar. And our First Socratic Seminar always comes with a guided resource. And our first Socratic seminar always comes with a guided resource. As they're reading the source, they're marking up or annotating the document and that is going to be the foundation of what they want to discuss in our Socratic seminar. My favorite Socratic seminar resource is in front of you called 10 Supreme Court Cases Every Teen Should Know. In order to process what it is that we have read together as a class, I give them these Socratic seminar sentence starter questions, but we also need to engage in civil discourse. If we need to, we will only speak to each other using these sentence starters to model what it is to have a civil discourse. These are all cases that were brought to, or excuse me, that were eventually brought to the level of the Supreme Court by teenage plaintiffs. This particular case was of a cheerleader who got cut from the cheerleading team. She did not make the softball team on her own on the weekend. She snapped a story, the cheerco sent it to the principal and she was suspended. Her parents filed a lawsuit against the school district and the Supreme Court said that there are limits to a school's ability to discipline a student when it comes to their social media activity off campus.
Right now, we're, we're in the position as a school district to say to people, if it's off campus and after hours, after school hours, it's no longer a school issue.
Right.
I commend the Supreme Court in this case because in, otherwise, if schools had that reach where they can start issuing consequences for behavior outside of school hours, where does it end?
Exactly.
So now we're doing it.
Yeah.
This is, this is what happens.
I understand your point of view. Let me tell you why.
Bring your own toga.
Bring your toga. What happens when we apply the same principles to something that negatively affects you that you vehemently disagree with? But this is the standard we already set by making this decision.
If we were allowed to wear anything we wanted to school, where, to school, nothing would stop me from wearing shirts that say, I don't like this person. Speaking as a board member, we have to look at policies and practices that allow people to express themselves, but not, not express themselves to the detriment of others.
Right.
I guess that's the best way to say it. Then, and then one would ask maybe, well, I agree with you, let me add to that, then, then aren't we restricting free speech then?
When kids learn that for the greater good of society, the Supreme Court over and over and over has said that there are limits to your civil liberties here on campus. And when it comes to what can happen in a school versus what can happen, you know, down the street, not on the school, it's going to look different because of educational, you know, governing law.
Right. And aren't I supposed to behave everywhere I go?
Right.
Yes. Yes, you are.
Please do. When we're having a conversation about something, how often are we actually already thinking about what we want to say and therefore you're no longer actively listening? Wait till that thought is completed, then you can chime in because someone might say something that completely surprises you and you didn't hear it because you were already thinking of your rebuttal.
That's wonderful, wonderful advice that we should remind ourselves.
And that's a Socratic seminar.
And Now Noah Knows.
Okay, um, thank you, Marissa, for teaching me that. I did, these are mine. I did want to say that I was carrying these out of the house and my daughter said, oh, those are Ms. Long's Perceptical Spectacles from four years ago. So it obviously has an impact. And I, I do, I do, I hate cutting these things down. There is so much more to these that I've learned, but I can't do it all. So these, these are just amazing educators that we have. Um, thank you. Okay, moving on.
Make a brief comment, just very brief comment.
Can you do it on YouTube so I get the watch?
I can make a brief comment. Just that I worked with Ms.,
Thank you, Judy.
Marissa Long and she was amazing and I used to walk into her room and see what she was doing with the kids when she was at Hawthorne and I, they, the kids loved her and they really respected her and she's a fabulous teacher and I just wanted to mention that because I had, I worked with her and I got to sub for her on occasion.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus, for sharing that. Okay, moving on to consent calendar. I'm pulling item B1. Anybody else pulling to double checking?
I wanted to, to pull D and E together just to let the community know a little bit more about what we learned about at the strategic plan meeting.
Okay, great. So I'll just make the motion to approve the consent calendar minus items B1, D and E.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll go to item B1. I pulled this because of the celebratory nature of the item. I'll make a motion, put it on the floor first. I'll make a motion to approve item B1, the certificated personnel report.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Dr. Stern. On this report today, we are hiring a high school principal, something not to be taken lightly and although procedure puts it on the consent calendar, it's important not to glaze over something like this. It's important that when a board and a superintendent and everybody works in concert over several months to vet out a process to find us a high school principal. And all of our principals are so dynamic in our district. It's been a while, uh, this process and we are so pleased to have Mr. Drew Stewart joining our administration team with his terrific staff. And, and we obviously thank Mr. Decatrelle and Mr. Stewart for their work this year in guiding our school through this interim process. Once again, I, the first thing I was going to ask Mr. Stewart was, what's wrong with you? But I guess the real question is really what's, what's right with him. So I do appreciate going through the process and here we are today. So that's all I had to say on it. Colleagues, if you want to add anything before we vote.
I just want to say congratulations, Mr. Stewart. Over the last four years, I've gotten to know you a lot better from ASB and just from everything around campus. And I just wanted to say thank you for, as administration, along with Mr. Decatrelle just always being, and Ms. Jung and Mr. Chang always being very connected with the students that I really admire that. And I also just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Bregy and everyone who was part of the decision to hire Mr. Stewart for really weighing his experience and his commitment to the district because in my mind, there's really no competition to what you've done for us. So thank you so much.
Congratulations again, Mr. Stewart. And as I said earlier, you have full support of the board and we really look forward to great things in our future.
Congratulations and wish you all the best and looking forward to being with you the next couple of years and this new endeavor.
They've all said it before me, so congratulations and welcome on board as principal at the high school.
Congratulations.
And I just appreciate the entire administration team being here tonight, Ms. Kaver and Mr. Bugby and Dr. Scon, all being at the meeting tonight also, presenting or not. It's, it's a wonderful camaraderie that you're building and it really helps send that message throughout our entire district. So congratulations, welcome, and thank you all for coming. Dr. Bregy, anything else?
Yes, just quickly, Mr. Stewart, what a rigorous process that we had in place. I am so excited that you're joining us in a different role as we continue on with future years in our school district. Your experience is going to just bring so much to our school. We are on a road to success and you really have placed us in a place where we're going to be moving a lot quicker. So thank you and welcome.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Enthusiastically, all opposed. Motion carries. Congratulations. We will move on. Ms. Manichari, if you don't mind, I'm going to combine D and E. We can, okay. So we'll move on and make a motion for items 11, D and E, the approval of the I-Ready quote for the 23, 24 school year and the approval of the NWEA's Measure of Academic Progress MAP quote for the 23, 24 school year. Second?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. Okay, Mr. Seaman will present first or do you want to ask a question?
No, please go right ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seaman.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to be able to bring this to the community's attention as well and discussion here. So over the past year, through the strategic plan, we set out to kind of figure out a way to measure one year's growth in one year's time. Through that process, we realized some of our internal tools was not providing the data that we really truly needed to be able to adjust the instructional practices and, and achieve the outcomes that we wanted through some of our current educational technology tools. So throughout the strategic plan, throughout the full year, we started to vet out, started to research, interview other school districts, looking at what instructional practices were happening within our elementary, middle and high schools, especially around our English, math, and even now our science because we have the CAS exam. And started to look for tools that we could utilize to advance our strategic plan, our student outcomes, and make sure that every student is gaining that one year's growth in one year's time academically. And that led us to taking our educational technology tools and starting to remove some of them. So obviously what we always like is it's a cost benefit to the district by removing all these random outside tools that we were previously utilizing that wasn't providing us the data that we needed. And we are now recommending for the board to consider two tools, one predominantly focused for our elementary school. And again, we do have not only the research behind the effectiveness of the tools, but also counterparts that we can lead on in other districts that can help with the implementation training of our staff. And then for, that would be I-Ready and then NWEA MAP, which was actually referred to in the CRE, presentation by Dr. Scon earlier, and utilizing that for our 612, which has a science component for the first time. So as we're starting to be assessed in the CAS, CAS exam, we will also be able to now monitor and use it as a diagnostic formative and summative assessment tool to determine, are we making progress towards that CAS exam before the students sit for that exam? So these are excellent tools and highly recommended by education services, staff, principals, teachers, et cetera.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions, colleagues?
So you're confident that these two tools will be able to cover all the areas in the assessments as we go along in the strategic plan? They have all the components in them and that's what I want to make sure.
Absolutely. Hundred percent confident from Dustin Seaman and even multiple others. Yes, a hundred percent.
DS guarantee.
DS guarantee.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Seaman, for the explanation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Terrific. Motion carries. We move on to reports. Alex?
My report happened to-
The penultimate report.
Yes, it happened to fall in line with the time constraint today because it's very short and you'll see why. Let me just show my screen. They did not, but I'm happy I managed to follow it. Okay, so what's going on in Beverly? So the first slide is the reason why my report is very short tonight. And that is that last week and this week, AP exam week, so we did not have very much going on, but just a huge congratulations to all the students who are done or almost done with AP exams. I have one more left, but most people are done, I think. And then the few events we had, one of them was the French cabaret, which I saw many board members and cabinet there, so thank you for coming. It was an amazing night and this is the second time that we've done it out in the courtyard and I think it just creates an amazing ambiance. And just a huge thank you to Madame Carlson who organizes this event every single year and has done so for, I think, 20-plus years and as well as to all the other programs who helped the night run very smoothly. And then another thing is last Friday was the senior pendant party. So May 1st has passed, the seniors who are going to college have committed. And so just thank you to the College Career Center, Ms. Barnison and Ms. Ku for hosting the pendant party during lunch. It was a lot of fun. And then just two upcoming things. Next week is the CTE programs, CTE showcase, which the theme will be an evening at the Cotton Club and the event will feature student work from all the CTE departments, like classes, so business, culinary, fashion, KBEV, audio production, MSA and robotics. And then lastly, prom is this Saturday, so I hope to see some people there. And that's it. And also meeting countdown, one. Very sad.
When you say prom, you hope to see some people there. You're not talking about us, right? I just want to make sure. I don't even have a tux.
Dr. Bregy, I'll expect to see you.
Challenge accepted.
Colleagues, any comments for, for Alex?
Thanks for your report, Alex, and good luck on your AP exam.
Alex, I'm so happy we're getting out of here early so you can go home and study. When I was a senior taking APs, I was not calm, collected like a cucumber as you are. You're just amazing. Keep it up.
Where's the Hoya pendant?
Thank you and good luck on your remaining AP exams.
I think the reason that you're in Georgetown already is the reason why you're so calm during AP exams. They can't harm me now. Do you have an exam tomorrow?
Thursday.
Okay, good. I was going to let you go right now if it was tomorrow, but now you're staying. You're staying as long as Dr. Stern stays, that's it.
Thank you for your report and I'll see you Saturday. Okay, great. And I will be hopefully just as quick.
When's your APs?
Every day. Just a quick thank you to just all our staff. I know that, you know, there's times of the year where we say thank you, so not only to our teachers and to our nurses and our classified staff, our food service staff. Thank you and thank you every day. It's such a pleasure to work with you. It's a hardworking group of people, also really fun. Just everybody collectively makes us such a great place to come to work every day. As you may know, that it is Asian American, Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, so we celebrate and we recognize the contributions and achievements of our diverse communities. Also, May is Jewish American Heritage Month and we look forward to throughout this month celebrating the rich history, culture and traditions of our Jewish Americans. Dude Be Nice Week at BVMS, lots of things at BVMS tonight that you're hearing. One of my favorite weeks of the year, put on by Mrs. Hartley and staff at Beverly Vista Middle School. Just a great way to recognize from our students to our security staff and also to our police department and fire department. Great celebration that happens there, that happens all week. Elrodeo School, this is just, you know, we've, we've put this in some social media, but we had the, the gala at Hawthorne that the parents asked us to come up with something that would be a really good auction item. We didn't really know how great it was until we put it up for auction. But to have a tour of Elrodeo, a private tour, and you can see here through the help of Ms. Darkins that we have the very first with our branding, the vests that we had made for Elrodeo, the Elrodeo red, also construction hats that had some branding on it. And we had two families that very generously donated to be able to go on this tour and spend time with us, which was really fun. And we were able to walk them through this gorgeous school and get all of the reactions at every turn and also then from the parents as well. So, you know, we're really happy. Thank you, Mr. Crot also for helping and organizing and our ProES staff for just kind of stepping back for a minute so we could take these sneak previews. So it was great and these families also are the very first to have the new branded Elrodeo spirit wear. Another great event last weekend or the weekend before last, it was an event put on at Roxbury Park. And what I loved about it was it wasn't something that was just necessarily for third graders or fourth graders. This was really for families and, you know, this was the kind of thing where I thought I could have just dropped by and say hi and, you know, come in for 30 minutes and just say hi and, and let everyone, you know, participate in this family fun day. But it was like two and a half hours later. It was just the type of event that was, it, parents were having conversations with other parents and it was so great to hear because it was just so authentic. Like, oh, hey, are you the, the house that you have the basketball net up and, you know, right down the street? You know, do you have the yellow house where you have, you know, something in front of it? We heard that over and over and over. And so we were able to watch families meeting each other for the first time. So that was a great event. So thank you very much for our PTAs that were involved and for also for Horseman and Hawthorne. What a great, great couple of hours that was. Also at the elementary level, just, just stunning art pieces. My hat is off to Ms. Fetterman, Ms. Graham- at the elementary level, just stunning art pieces. My hat is off to Ms. Federman, Ms. Graham. This work that our students are able to produce, and it was hung so nicely in our city hall. And I had Ms. Graham just take me on a tour and how things were grouped. And, you know, we often talked about the kind of the consistency of programming between Horseman and Hawthorne, and it was so great that that work was grouped together and it was, you know, by the standards and by expectations. And it was just really fun to be able to see the consistency in teaching that is occurring in our elementary schools. And there were some pieces that just, and most of them, that just really spoke to a lot of us. So really fun event in a really fun location. Again, it's kind of an elementary report. The Spring Choral Concert was really terrific. Ms. Chan, Ms. G really have high expectations of our kids. The quality of music, the complexity of the music was really surprising to me. But again, to see our schools come together and really produce such quality in the number of songs, the stage presence that the kids have is, those are skills, those are life skills that they're learning. But what a great evening, and it was literally standing room only in there. People were on the floor. I thought Mr. Bugby was going to lose his mind when he saw that. But thank you for allowing them to sit there. Something that we've shared already, it's really a tribute to, you know, our school district being kind of awarded Best Community for Music Education. This was submitted by Justin Klotzel at the high school, but it really does go to show you that it really starts in our elementary and it moves up through our middle and through our high school. These types of recognition fit really nicely into our strategic plan for recognition of excellence. And as you've heard the theme already in this report, it really starts very young, and that pathway is really strong to the high school. So very excited about having that award. We did have a construction town hall, something a little bit different than what we've done in the past. We wanted to have an opportunity virtually so that you could be anywhere and get kind of an update on what's happening with the high school with B3, B4, and also what was happening at El Rodeo. So we had a comprehensive update, and then we had an opportunity for people to ask questions. I'm really appreciative of the staff that took time out to not only view the presentation, but then stick around for some questions. And so it's a great way to get updated without having to, you know, have to come to a meeting. So we were certainly glad to do that. And I know that next fall, we will have another really progressive update for you. I'm gonna just end with, you know, just, you know, a huge splash, which was, you know, really the Horseman Spring Carnival. What an incredible amount of planning that was put into this carnival. It was really planned well, the timing of the events. It was, there was something for everybody, from rides to foods. I mean, it really reminded me of like the movie Grease, where the high school kids come out and it's, you know, they're, they're just, you know, like, real rides. So it was really fun and to watch the kids run out there and get really excited. And it was nice, the planning was so evident because there wasn't one area where kids were. Kids and families really moved and flowed throughout the entire property. So I thought that that lent itself to a really good time for everyone. These are not a small undertaking. These are just gigantic preparation. And so the people that volunteered, I know we had board members that were volunteering. So thank you, Mrs. Manicherry. Ms. Marcus, I know that you were volunteering and helping. It just takes everybody, and they really pulled it off. So I know Mr. Bugby's here, so thank you. It was really terrific. Our Behavior Accountability Panel, last board meeting, we were in Washington, so I had shared that this is something that I'd like to do. That is now, you know, something that we've placed for you to review and to think about being part of. That just closed, so I look forward to updating the board on our next steps. But the application process is closed for that committee. We have a very ambitious schedule, and I'm excited about that. I did have a couple of meetings with Chief Stainbrook. We're actually gonna meet at the police department and have kind of a different environment there, and then have, as part of our facilitators, they are going to join us. And I think it's gonna be a really beneficial experience, and we're gonna keep sharing information with the board and also with the community on our progress, some of the recommendations that this committee will have. And it will be ongoing for the next several weeks. So I look forward to updating you and keeping you abreast of what's happening. This is the final slide, and it's really an important one. Our strategic plan, at the end of the year, we've gone through quite a cycle of planning. And what has really worked well for us is this, it's not only a communication loop, but it's a planning loop. There are not many school districts that I know of in our entire country that have a planning loop that involves the Board of Education. And so it's really pulled us together as leaders of our school district, with our staff and with our elected officials, to really get a good idea of what's happening, but to also, you know, challenge each other for growth, and then also, you know, really provide an opportunity of what's working, what's not working, and if something's not working, why. And we really challenged ourselves to push hard on our strategic plan. And in some areas, we excelled beyond where we thought we would be. And then in some areas, we were challenged by different circumstances, but we were able to identify what they are. Some are resources, some are that we're waiting for results that are not in yet. But we had what I would consider to be a very authentic conversation, where we could talk and we could share, and it was, most importantly, in an environment where we could tell our story about areas where, you know, we still need to continue to grow, or we need to change resources, or change direction. And that was a great opportunity for us. And what I'm really pleased about is that we're gonna continue this. This is not a one-year, that communication loop or that planning loop that I was talking about, that we're already now planning for meeting with our Board of Education again in July. And so I'm excited that that plan is going to loop around again. And then we have a leadership conference that we will be bringing that information. And it's just, we're really off to something remarkable here that doesn't happen often. And I'm just really proud and appreciative to be part of this as we continue into another school year and as we end this one.
Thank you, Dr. Bregge. If there are any comments, don't feel obliged, but we don't want to fill his head too much.
Just thank you for your report, and I never really have to say I hope to see you there because you're always there.
Thank you for your report, Michael. I appreciate it. Looking forward to the advisory, hearing about the Advisory Committee as it begins to take shape. And also, I would also like to just congratulate you and your team on the strategic plan. I felt really good about it, and I feel really great about our partnership with you and with your whole cabinet. And I'm really looking forward to going into planning for the next year. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll keep it short. Thank you. Great report, and the strategic plan meeting was exceptional, so impressive. It was a lot for me to take on, you know, and absorb as a first-time board member, but I appreciate it very much. In particular, the planning that went into it and the honesty and authenticity of it was real, and I appreciate that so much. So looking forward to the following year and our work together this summer on it as well.
Very, very complete report. Can't add anything to it except one thing. You left one thing for me. I'm going to attend tomorrow, frozen, at Beverly Vista Middle School, and I look forward to everybody going out and seeing it because she does a great job. And thank you again for the great report. Very thorough.
Thank you so much, and I really did enjoy the conversation of the strategic planning, and I thought it was very successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bregge.
You're welcome.
Moving on, Business and Finance. Can I get a motion on 13A, please?
I will move for the rejection of Claim Number 621075.
I'll second that. I don't think I've been able to hold. Okay, if there's no questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to Planning Facilities.
I will move for the adoption of Resolution Number 2022-2023-24, approving execution of the CalShape Grant Agreement.
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Stern. I had a question. Colleagues, are there any questions on this one? Okay. Thank you, Rafael. So I had asked this, and the answer came back, and I still can't process this, but it's, I don't have the total amount of the grant in front of me. It was 300-something thousand?
So, yes, so the grant was for $246,000.
$246,000, of which it listed 100,000 earmarked for showerheads.
Yes. So some of it is earmarked for that. We're...
I want to stay on the showerheads for a second.
Yes.
Okay. Everything else I completely agree with. $100,000 worth of showerheads, and it's just showerheads, not shower valves. Showerheads.
Yes.
Which I assume are water-saving showerheads.
Yes.
So do we have that use of our showers in our district? Because my understanding is people really don't use the showers in any of the locker rooms anymore.
So, so when we went through and looked at the different items that are out of compliance, so the CalShape, what it's trying to do is put us in more water-saving, compliant sort of items. And they, when they looked at the showerheads, we added those in there. If we don't have a need for those, then we wouldn't essentially have to replace them. And then those funds would have to be returned. But in essence, it's, those specific items were approved. So with the CalShape plumbing, it's like a specific
Right.
...item that has to be approved.
So it's up to $100,000 in showerheads if we decide to change them?
Exactly.
Okay.
Do we have that many showerheads that cost?
Well, there, we...
We don't. No.
So it's an authorization. And, but I'd just like to say real quickly, it's a really great opportunity for the other items as well that we have. I mean, when you combine both of these CalShape grants, we had one that was around 650,000, and then this one as well. It's close to $900,000 that we've been able to find. So it's a really, really good grant that we're real happy about.
Okay.
I'd just like to thank you for finding the grants for us and putting it and bringing it to our district. It seems that every meeting we have, you are up here telling us about additional funds that you've been able to find. So I really appreciate that. Thank you, Rafael.
Thank you. It's a team effort.
Thank you, team. Thank you, Rafael. Okay. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great. Motion carries. Moving on to 14B.
I'll move for the approval of Amendment Number 1 for the Inspector of Records, IOR, Services with Sandy Pringle Associates.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus and Mrs. Wells. Mrs. Manicherry, you indicated earlier you got a question on this, or?
Yes, thank you. I just think it would be a good idea for the community to understand about Inspector of Record and, you know, what's been the evolution here through the amendment, please.
Sure. And for that, I'll go ahead and bring in Mr. Will Karat, who will go over it and go over exactly why we needed this amendment. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for letting me answer this question for you. So the evolution of the inspection services here, prior to my arrival and prior to our team's arrival, for the most part, is we had an inspection service for our high school project that was not a direct contract with the district. So prior to my arrival, there was a RFP process that occurred, and Sandy Pringle was selected from that competitive process. I believe there were six or seven other firms that also submitted proposals. Once that was approved, they came up with a schedule of fees based on just an estimate of how much inspection we would need. So they determined it was about $562,000 per year for inspection services. And what we're doing here with this board item is we're revising that amount to be more accurate based on the need. So next year, we're gonna be around, what was it, 600 and, I have it here, 656,000, and then the following year will drop down to about 166,000. So with this amendment, we're just revising the amount so we can be more accurate with our budgets and plan better, I guess is the best way to put it.
Thank you. I think if I saw correctly in your answers, that the net of it is, is that it'll be about $300,000 less in total.
Yeah, and I don't want that to seem like it's a savings because this contract is based on a time and material basis.
It's an estimate, right?
So it's, we're literally paying for what they charge or how many hours were needed of inspection services.
Right. And as a point of reference, the DSA Inspector 1 that we were paying prior to Sandy Pringle, they were, we were being billed at 185 an hour, and now we're being billed at $98 an hour for the same level of inspector for a DSA 1 inspector?
That's correct. And they also had other inspectors on board, either directly through their company or also as a subcontractor.
Thank you.
We did, I dug into this a little bit with Will because one of our, there were some rationales when we changed the inspectors and changing the accountability instruct, sorry, the accountability structure was the right move to do because the way it was set up prior to this one was not directly with the district. So I agreed with my colleagues about changing that. We were supposed to realize some savings, just so my colleagues are aware. The prior year, we had inspections totaling $626,000. This year will come up to be 656. So the savings that we wanted to realize didn't really materialize. But as I asked staff the question, there were different circumstances this year that may or may not have led to a similar situation had we kept on with the other inspector. But we, I think what Rafael had said is that we are gonna look closer, closer at how the inspectors are being utilized and see if we can find some savings there because we didn't, we didn't get savings from moving to Sandy Pringle, but we're hoping we can get savings from using them better in the future.
Well, we got savings from an hourly rate. It's that they had more inspectors than what we had through TCDS.
Right.
So one could argue that we're at the right level or that it could be monitored better in terms of how many inspectors we need. But from an hourly rate, you know, if we're paying for time and material, based on time, the hours that we have and the hourly rate is far less.
Right. And I'm just stating for the record that it was, the prior year was 626,000, now we're at 656. So there's a $30,000 differential that we would like to try to in the future years, see if we can put down so we can actually save some money
Right.
...on our inspections. Because yes, the previous inspector had a larger hourly rate, but we had less staff. We have more staff under Sandy Pringle, so it kind of makes up for the fact. So it's almost become a wash, but I'm glad that at least it's now under our contract.
And we are keeping close track of our inspector services. That's something that we want to make sure, to make clear. That's something we're looking at. Our teams are looking at consistently. As we don't need them, we, and that's the advantage of the time and materials, like as we don't need them, we'll start reducing. And so that's great overall. So it's, it's hard to compare one and the other because it's just different types of styles and services. But what I can say is that we are carefully monitoring this, and it's been, it's very successful with the relationship.
And I don't think you can argue with the difference in the rate. So from 185 an hour to $98 an hour, that's the only thing that you really could compare as apples to apples.
Yeah, except if you're using three inspectors as opposed to one.
Right. But the work can change at different times in terms of how many inspectors are necessary. I would just argue with that. But I see your point now.
Okay. Thank you, colleagues. Any other questions on this one? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Working on Dr. Stern's deadline, and we appreciate this. We're gonna move up to Board Policies. We have a first reading for the Murals Policy. And we can, I assume we're actually gonna keep at the first reading and not move to a second reading. I'm sorry, I need to pull my policy up. So I'll just, I'll start at the end while I'm pulling up my policy. So I'll just, I'll start, um, at the end while I'm pulling up my policy. Do you have any? Alex, you have any?
I don't have any comments. Do we need to make it?
No.
Do we need to make an emotion for approval first?
I think this will address-
Did you say, didn't you have a comment? Do we need to make a motion for approval first?
Yeah, we can. I mean, we, it-
Do you want to override the first reading and just do enough?
You don't.
Well, I have a comment. Um, well, let's make a mo- a motion-
Yeah, let's make a motion. We can always withdraw it.
For approval, the first reading of AR 1326.1 Murals.
I'll second. Thank you, Mrs. Wells. Um, okay, now back to, um, Judy, did you have anything?
Yep.
Rochelle?
No, I was just going to make a comment that, and I will, um, approval of the motion, so it doesn't really matter, I'm just that it was a very complete and I think it explains where we are and how we're going to accept things and it will, it addresses a lot of the questions that were raised before, so I was happy to see that this is something that we're going to do now.
Great. Okay, Dr. Stern.
It really has evolved into a really good policy, um, especially from the starting point. I would submit that we add one sentence. I was bringing it back to the kids, but under the appropriateness, would it be possible, and, you know, they can edit this language as you want, but you could say something like "the developmental appropriateness as well as potential impact upon all of our students should be considered when selecting mural content." As it reads now, and I know there's a lot of, um, layers of ability to choose and to veto or accept, but I think that that should be something that is part of the policy since there's a wide range of things that can be, uh, placed on a campus and-
Which letter, Dr. Stern? Which- The A, it's under A. So under, okay.
Yeah. So under appropriateness.
One more time.
Okay, so, something to the effect of "the developmental appropriateness as well as potential impact upon all of our students should be considered when selecting mural content."
Okay, um, colleagues, do you want to, if, if we, we can add that and then bring it back in the second reading?
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
I'm okay with that, too.
All right. Okay, thank you. I will send this-
So she'll send it over to you. We can put it into, into the thing and bring it back for a second reading.
Do we amend the motion?
Not a problem.
Do we amend the motion?
No.
We don't need to amend the motion because for, it'll come back in the second reading.
We're not going to do this in the second, we're not going to waive it.
Yes, yeah, we're not, I don't, I don't want to waive it, so.
Okay.
We can, we can vote for the first reading tonight and then with changes as per Dr. Stern, and then it'll come back in the second reading.
We'd rather just wait.
Right, but Mrs. Marcus, in order to get it to the second reading, we have to pass the first reading?
Well, wait, I didn't know that was, I thought the motion was only that we wouldn't be having a second reading.
No, 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 we didn't waive, no, we didn't waive it.
First reading.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, Dr. Bregge, you have the note or she'll send it to you?
I, yes.
Okay, great, already sent. Terrific. Um, any other comments on that? Thank you very much. Um, all in favor, we're doing the first reading only of 1326.1.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Wonderful. Motion carries. Moving on, 16A.
I move for approval of option four B1B2 modernization plaque.
I'll second.
Any, uh, comments, colleagues? Okay, um, I did ask, and this is, the, the cost to change the plaque out is $5,600. I know, um, you guys have issues with the name that's on the existing plaque. It'll be your prerogative to vote to replace it. Um, where does this money come out of?
Uh, this does come out of the bond.
Okay. Being that we're short on bond funds, I, I don't feel this is a reasonable expense at this time, so I will not be supporting this. Um, although I understand my colleagues' desire, um, in this, I don't think this is one that needs to get done, so. Um, any other comments? Nope, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Myself. Motion carries, four to one. Okay, last item on this one. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for the approval of the CSBA 2023 Annual Education Conference Workshop Proposal submitted by Mr. Margot.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Thank you very much, Dr. Stern. Questions?
Hi, am I in a question?
Hi, yes. I just didn't understand, what is the strand? And I was to understand that you're going to speak to this, Mr. Margot?
Yes, I will. Um, let me ask, see if Rochelle has a question I can answer.
My statement, same question and, uh, well, my concern was, was this not something that the board could decide which strand? In other words, is that your suggestion for that strand or is this a board decision? I mean, I didn't, if it was already decided?
Okay, so the birth of this came, every year, CSBA sends an invitation to districts to admit proposals. We, in the past, have probably ignored that email more than anything else, but in lieu to be aligned with our strategic plan, um, we decided this year, we're going to try to do a workshop, um, as, as in the last couple of years and, um, our, you know, Mrs. Wells' involvement with Laxa, we are trying to do more and more and be more of a presence in education, both countywide and statewide. So, um, Dr. Bregge and I had conversations about this and we thought it would be a good idea to submit an initial proposal. There are no details really with the proposal yet. We picked governance, um, because we feel what area would be effective at CSBA, having all attended these conferences, what area could, um, new board members get the most out of? Because we've all sit and sat in those workshops and we kind of know really what works and what doesn't, um, for districts overall. And a lot of things that districts present kind of target specific districts. We tried to think of something that everybody can get something out of, and that was part of the, the online little proposal is, what are people going to walk away with? So, our hopes is to kind of show how this district has gone from, um, I think nine superintendents in 12 years to one superintendent in seven. So that's kind of the gist of our presentation, and really that's all we've presented. So we have to wait to hear back whether we're accepted, and then we'll actually put the presentation together, which would then involve the board and board, you know, and other board members invited to come up. They, they limit the number of board members that can sit up there, but, um, that's, that's kind of the origin of this and where we're headed. So the strand is governance, strategy and practice. That's, that's the one we're doing, and our emphasis is building successful relationships between the boards and superintendents, so you can have a long-lasting superintendent and not a revolving door. So, that's the gist of it. Hopefully that answers.
Um, I, I think it's a great idea. We talked about trying to present for CSBA, so I think it's a wonderful idea and I really like the topic because I think that we've had such, such success, especially in this past year and year and a half, and, um, we have a lot to talk about and a lot of information that we can share. We put a lot of great structure in, in our board governance, and I think that as we are ending on that, this first year, we're really seeing the fruits of our labor, and it's a lot to share, so I, I really support this. I think that the most, the more you can incorporate all of the board and as many of the members of the cabinet, um, in how the presentation is done to really give testimony to how this process has gone, I think would be really important, but I, I think it's a great opportunity for us to shine at CSBA.
Thank you. Mrs. Wells? Anybody else? So, I, I guess we-
Well, I have a-
Go ahead.
I, I think it's a great idea, and I think that, that working together as, as part of the whole thing and putting this together is part of that whole, the idea behind it. So I'd just like to comment on that, and I do think it's, as I've gone to workshops at the, that many of them I sit in and I, I don't get much out of them, and I'm hoping that ours, we can really do something phenomenal and really show that this is the district that's the greatest, so I look forward to, and even working on it, so I think that that would be a-
Great. That's, thank you, thank you. That's the goal. Um, we've been working very hard, and I know President Wells kind of tried to set the tone with that last year, with really making Beverly Hills a presence on a greater level than just our own community, because we've heard from, when we were in Washington, other districts are saying, "We're modeling stuff after you guys."
Yeah.
So it's, it's, we want to wear that badge of honor proudly and put ourselves out there, and I think we are savvy enough in Beverly Hills to, to put together a workshop. Um, we have some very creative minds, not just on the board to contribute to the workshop, but in actually physically creating the slide deck, um, that, that, that make us look terrific, and I think that's important, and we've all, we, we've all had the experience of being there, so we know what works and we know what people can benefit from. And Rochelle, you said it as well, you know, it's, it's, most of those sessions are, we feel like they're not talking to us, you know? So they're talking to one specific school district that may have that as a malady, but we, this will cover everybody, because most of the people there we know are new school board members, and they will benefit from learning about the relationships and what we do to be successful. And it's not just Dr. Bregge's time here, um, it's that he's been here through several boards. So, we obviously are putting a system in place. It's not about the people, it's about the system and that we're successful. So I look forward to, I think we find out in August.
I think so, too.
Right, August is when they tell us, and then, then after that, we'll put it together for December. So, that's the timeline.
I think it's great.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Thank you, colleagues. Okay, um, with that, I will shut up because Mandy's giving me the old hee-ho here. Um, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, colleagues. I'm looking forward to that. And moving on, um, Ms. Crosshair, was there any public comment?
Did you hear, did you hear someone? Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so that's unnegatorio, thank you on that. Um, communication from board members, a lot going on, I know we're going to have stuff. Alex, anything else? Good luck on your APs then. Mrs. Wells?
Absolutely. Um, well, I would just say on, uh, we had a finance committee meeting on April the 26th, um, and we talked about different opportunities for financing to complete our projects. I'm not sure if I reported on that last time. Um, the other thing that, um, I wanted to say is that this Monday will be our Laxa meeting, our final Laxa meeting, and we are hosting here at Beverly Hills, so we're very excited about that. So if you see any, um, what looks to be like board members who are lost, but you don't recognize them, please direct them to the media center.
It's going to be at the media center.
Yes.
On five?
At 5:00. And lastly, I would just say that May is also Mental Health and Wellness Month, and I just wanted to, uh, give everybody, um, a moment to think about that as well. It's really important, especially everything that's going around that we're seeing around the world. Everything seems to tie back to mental health and wellness, and we can't emphasize that enough. Thank you.
I'm going to, I'm sorry, Ms. Manishari, I'm going to hit Dr. Stern so she can scan my cup.
So I came across something, and in part because Alex had reposted Beverly Decisions 2023, and that is, it organized in a graphic form all of, or a variety of college acceptances. And I'm going to be real quick, but these are the ones that came to my attention. I'm not going to say the names of the students, but I am going to just say some of the universities I am extraordinarily proud. It's an incredible lineup and there's variety of, you know, regionally in terms of interest level. So UCLA, Stanford University, Auburn University, um, WCUI School of Medical Imaging, Skidmore College, University of Wisconsin, University of Southern California, Pace University, Reed College, another UCLA, University of Montana, Cal State Long Beach, Parsons, the New School in New York, San Francisco State University, University of Washington, UC Berkeley, UC Berkeley, Pepperdine University, AUP, USC, uh, Southern Methodist University, UC San Diego, UC Riverside, UC Santa Cruz, University of Wisconsin-Madison, Columbia, University of Michigan, Chapman University, University of Southern California, San Diego State, Santa Monica College, Cal State Northridge, Georgetown, UC Berkeley, University of Arizona, University of Chicago, very good, Loyola Marymount, we're almost done, Kent State, SMC, um, and on their way to CSUN, Syracuse University, UC Davis, University of Wisconsin, Cal Poly Pomona, Kenyon College, Santa Monica College, University of Oregon, and let's see, Chapman, again, UC Irvine, UC Santa Barbara, Sarah Lawrence College, University of Wisconsin-Madison, University of Colorado at Boulder, UC Santa Barbara, Chapman, and that is just a small cross-section, so I am very proud and I-
Georgetown.
I did say Georgetown, and I, I'm just very proud of our seniors and I can't wait to see them graduating next month. Thank you.
I was told to keep my anonymity, but I do run that account, so. Oh. Don't follow it.
You have a good day. She's running that Instagram account.
Okay, I was wondering, but it's great, I love it.
Great account.
She has people DM her, the, their snapshot of where they went and it's just a great-
And my friend Elton, he's the one who like, does the DMs, but-
Does the DMs, but it's just a great lineup, so I'm very proud and, and it says a lot about our school that these kids are going all over. Thank you.
Nobody ever goes to the University of Minnesota. Never near Minnesota.
Maybe soon.
Um, thank you, Dr. Stern, you are excused. Rock and roll. Good luck to your son tonight. Mrs. Manishari?
Thank you. Uh, it's been a really amazing couple of weeks, so much, I, I feel like I'm on record saying this again and again, so much good stuff happening, uh, at BHUSD. It's almost hard to keep up with the invitations of, you know, fantastic exhibition of what our students and faculty and community is doing. Um, I did attend the family fun day. I think it's important to note that, uh, I did beat Mrs. Wells at the, uh, the potato sack race, and I'm still waiting for my medal on that one. It was really a beautiful day with pizza up to the sky, pizza boxes up to the sky. Um, the turnout was fantastic and the vibe among the various schools was just great. It was families. Um, the carnival was beautiful and magical and I had a great time. Um, I, the finance committee continues to be something that I think, um, is a gem in our community, and thank you, Mr. Guzman, for all your work and your transparency with your team. Um, we've been talking about, as you said, how are we going to finance the future of our modernization, and I think we have a path forward, hopefully, that we can all discuss, um, you know, at a later date, but the future is bright in that regard. Um, very grateful. As I said earlier, the strategic plan was a very special moment personally for me. I thought it was super, super professional, um, and it reminded me very much of being corporate at Panda Express, and that's the caliber of, um, presentation and communication and benchmarking, um, that we were responsible to do, and that's something that I'm excited to see, uh, happen here. Also, I wanted to speak to the CASP testing. Uh, there's been CASP testing at all of our schools the last couple of weeks, uh, from a parent perspective, the communication, um, and the buildup to it. I just commend all the site leaders for that. As a parent, it's been really great to see what's coming up in a couple of weeks, what's coming up next week, what can we expect, uh, for our children, what is their day going to look like, what happens if they miss a session? Uh, so I just really commend you all on the presentation that you're giving in that regard. Um, I come away from reading every email and having no questions, um, but I know that Um, I come away from reading every email and having no questions, um, but I know that if I do have a question, I can easily click on, um, the view or reply button and it takes me to my parent's square and, um, I'm sure to get a response within one business day. So I just think that, um, making the testing seamless, uh, and just part of our culture has been really good and, um, I feel like it's all coming together with the CER and other approaches to help our kids do better and feel more comfortable in the process. So thank you all for that.
Well, my colleagues have pretty well covered everything that I wanted to, um, say. Uh, I just want to mention that I know it's, uh, American Jewish, American Heritage Month and I'm hoping to have a very unusual guest for his, to celebrate that next month. I'm not going to say who it is, but it is a very, very well-known person. Um, and I just want to make another comment about the task force that's being developed. I hope that this is going to help us completely get to the bottom of what's going on in the district. We're taking a beating in terms of the publicity and what's going on and I'm not a social media person and, and very disturbed by what I'm hearing. Uh, what even makes me more disturbed is that sometimes some of these students who don't behave properly are being, being, being made heroes and that bothers me a lot. I really, um, I, that, that's, it's one thing to be bad, but then to praise the hero is, is something else again. So I am really looking forward to this committee getting started and getting some action and getting things done. It's very, very uppermost in my mind. Uh, I think I just want to remind everybody that Frozen is coming to Beverly Vista Middle School. I look forward to it and I hope you all will go there. And I don't have any committees that are, that I had this week or the week before they are coming up, so I don't have any board meeting, committee reports. So I want everybody to have a wonderful, uh, I think Mother's Day is coming. I want to wish everybody a very happy Mother's Day, uh, for those of you and maybe those of you who are grandmothers. Have a wonderful Mother's Day, happy Mother's Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Rochelle. French night was fabulous. I didn't win any of the auction items. People didn't listen to me. They showed up, they bid. I know Raphael bid me out on a couple of things. Sorry, I forgive you.
The baseball game?
I, I got, I got a.
By a dollar.
I got a piano lesson and a little, and some macaroons.
I got a French show.
But it was such a fun night, the French night, even though I really don't understand what they're saying at all. So, um, it's, it's culture beyond language, right? Um, I was very proud of us tonight. We spent over an hour on kids, teachers and education. Um, they have said many times in CSBA trainings that when the board is focused on those things, um, in their work, it reflects back into the schools and the community. So I, I applaud my colleagues tonight for indulging in, you know, all of our, our collective,